Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the Board of Selectmen meeting for September 1st. And I'm going to assume the role of chairman as Mr. Titlebaum is not here yet. May I have a nomination for a clerk pro tem, please?
Okay.
May I have a second for that? All second.
Okay.
Nomination for Mr. Troppiano and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Four zero zero. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, all five selectmen and the town administrator are present this evening. Oh, here he is.
Well, just keep going.
That's all right, just keep going.
Thank you. May we have the pledge of allegiance? Please.
......................................................... Okay, then.
Make note that the chair came in at four past.
Seven and three.
I'm giving you four.
Yeah.
Seven oh four.
Yeah, I didn't feel the extra minute off, but thanks.
All right, I will turn the clerk back to Judy and she can turn this thing back to you.
Turn the chair back to you.
Okay, we have a presentation? Let's get to it.
Would you prefer I leave the mask on?
No, don't have to.
Not from that distance.
Take it off. You're far enough away.
Could you...
There's nobody around you for quite some distance.
Identify yourself and spell your name, please.
Sure. My name...
Green light means on.
My name is Michael Scipione. And I'm with Weston and Sampson and it's spelled S.C.I.P.I.O.N.E.
Thank you.
And I wanted to thank the board for having me here tonight and allowing me to present some of the findings that we have been working on collaboratively with the town. We've had...
I have a difficulty hearing you just over here.
Yeah.
So take one of the mics and pull it right up close to you. Make sure it's on because you're gonna almost eat these microphones.
Is it working now?
Hit it.
Are you hearing through the screen or the back?
No. Are you hearing us?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Is this one any better?
Yes.
That's better. Good. Keep it up close. Now we can hear you.
Now you can hear me, okay? Thank you. I know I've been told many times I have a voice that doesn't carry well, so please just prompt me if I start to move away and you can't hear me. We've been working with the town for several months now, looking at what the alternative line, what some options are for solid waste management over the next couple of years that are coming forward. I've been with Weston and Sampson 35 years and I've been working on solid waste issues for municipalities like Wareham for about 30 of those 35 years, a little bit more maybe. And I also live in town, so that's not a bad thing, I guess. So I wanted today to be able to give you an overview and take a look at some of the options through this process. I've gotten lots of assistance from town administrator Derek Sullivan and Dave DPW Selectman. Yep. Selectman Jimmy Neese. We also had discussions with folks from Covanta and from CMW in order to get a little bit of a lay of the land. And because of the assistance that the town's given, we were able to also take the contract that we had and take it further and go out and get curbside collection proposals from several vendors. So it provides a little bit of a better baseline for some of the cost analysis that we have to talk about today. And I want to give a little bit of background on what's going on, a little bit about some changes that are coming in the near future to make sure folks are aware of them. And then get right into what some of the options that we looked at that seem reasonable to consider for the town for the future. And I do have a prepared presentation, but if you prefer to just ask questions as we go, that's absolutely fine also by me, whatever suits the board. If you want to cut me off and ask a question, that's fine. So the town of Wareham demographics, you folks obviously know we are a population of about 22,000 folks and about 8,200 households, 10,670 housing usants. And the 8,200 came from the assessors office and that's important because it's the basis of a lot of the cost estimating. Current solid waste...
Can I just ask you one question?
Absolutely.
I see what you used, so I'm assuming these are your numbers that you used to feed into this later on. Did you take into account that we have 80,000 people here in the summertime?
Forty-four.
Forty-four thousand?
Forty-four.
Just over 40.
Just over 40? Wow, we used to have a lot more than that.
Well, that's what we certify to the state on our liquor counts.
Oh, okay. That's what we certify.
It's just felt like 80 this summer.
Yeah, it has been.
It's felt like 80, I can tell you that.
But it's unusual, we understand that.
This was a busy, it's a busy year.
So did you take that into account when you did the numbers?
When we did the numbers, we used the solid waste volumes that were provided and available. And I'll talk a little bit about that because some of the solid waste information that's available is not that great. So for instance, as you look at the seasonal fluctuations, seasonal fluctuations in solid waste and recyclables as reported by, through the transfer stations and by the haulers that bring it over to CMAS for no cost, there's not a significant seasonal fluctuation in those numbers. We would have expected to see a significant difference and we don't see it in the values that are out there.
Well, some of people don't, sometimes don't need it because they just throw it on the side of the road.
Or on the beach.
Yeah. So I'll get into that.
You'll get into that?
In a little bit. Not about the side of the road.
That's okay.
That's Dave's issue, right? So the current sit... Oh, sorry, I wanted to go back and just point out a few things on this slide. So currently towns of, town of Wareham has had trash disposal at CMAS and recyclables at $0 per ton. That ends this December. CMW operates two transfer stations that are paid for by CMAS. That also ends this December. CMW landfill, which is operated by Covanta, is expected to end also December. That may slide a little bit depending on how much material they have, but right now it's slated to close in December and be capped, final capped in the spring. And the town has been in negotiations for future disposal with CMAS. Currently, the town sells 4,600 stickers at $40 a sticker. Approximately half of the households in town, 48 percent, use the transfer stations and approximately half use curbside subscription service.
Excuse me. Some of those sticker prices are for seniors, so it's not $40.
Okay.
Because seniors do get a discount.
I think the point with that is that the sticker fee is fairly cheap compared to other solid waste disposal.
Oh, yeah, it's very cheap, but I'm just saying that senior get it for 15.
Okay. I was unaware of that. And then the information on solid waste and recyclables is limited. And that's where I wanted to talk a little bit about. We saw some things as we looked at the solid waste volumes and the recycling volumes for the town, based on the records that are available and some estimates that mostly the CMW district has some information. However, based on what happens in the rest of the country, a few things were a little surprising. One was that you didn't have much of a seasonal difference in the amount of solid waste that was generated and disposed of in the town. And two, the solid waste and recyclable numbers seemed somewhat high for the population and the number of households that come there. Nevertheless, we use those for all the evaluation because that was the best information that was available. And you'll see as I go through this that it might not have a significant difference because what we tried to do was base the evaluations on the number of households as opposed to the amount of solid waste. So in some situations where you see a dollar figure carried for disposal of solid waste and refuse, it's consistent through the work that we did, but we used the numbers that were available. If anything, I believe those would be a little bit high. So the costs carried might be a little bit high for the evaluation. However, it's better to be a little bit high at this point and consistent than to, you know, go around the numbers that you have and that are being reported and say, "We don't think those are good numbers." So I just wanted to alert you to that situation. And as you mentioned, the seasonal fluctuality was a surprise. So considerations, the things that I just think the board should be aware of and be thinking about, cost for solid waste and recyclables will increase. That's pretty obvious since you've been paying zero for them. That's both true for the town and for the homeowners. In most cases, solid waste will increase from zero to around $80 a ton for disposal. And these are first year costs based on discussions with CMAS, Covanta for disposal cost. And recycling and processing and disposal will increase from a dollar a ton to around $100 a ton. And that's a very fluctuating marketplace. Things have changed in the recycling market. And a couple of months ago it was about $110 a ton. Right now it's about $95, $98 a ton. So it's a market that's been fluctuating because of what's happened with the end markets, primarily the markets in China where a lot of our material has been going over the years. An item to consider is what level of service is desired, and that can range from zero to a high level of service for the future. And the presentation, the rest of the presentation will focus on the options based on cost for homeowners because it seems the easiest way to put things on kind of a level playing field.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Does CMAS burn everything? We do supposedly have recyclables and, you know, trash, but isn't it really a single stream plant?
Well, CMAS Waste Energy Plant is a mass burn facility. So they bring the material in and they burn the material that comes out of the trash. As far as recyclables, I don't know what they do with them. They tell us they transport them to processing facilities and they get processed. But the material, based on what I've seen, there's not a significant amount of policing that occurs at the transfer station. So if somebody throws recyclables into the dumpsters at the transfer station or the compacters, I expect that they probably do go through the mass burn facility.
So just to continue that, when... I'll go back, I'll come back to that, thank you.
Judy, are you asking that when this happens, can we just send everything to CMAS, including recyclables, and they'll burn it all?
I'm thinking of the property which is across the street. When you have something that's unusual, you take that into that building, what's it called? I don't even know what it's called.
Zero waste.
Yeah, zero waste, yeah. And that looks to me like a forest of God's trash. I mean, you know, they got bulldozers, they got everything. And if the way that they are segregating it is truly separated, then I would buy into the fact that there is some recycling going on. I don't think we recycle in Wareham. I know we have a recyclable, you know, off of, what's the name of that road? I can't, Plymouth Road. But for most people, they don't. If you look at California, for instance, you can't even put leaves in your trash. So I just don't, I mean, did Covanta give you how much plastics or recyclables they...
No. No. So also, please keep in mind, though, that 50% of the residents use a subscription service where they get curbside collection by a local hauler who collects both recyclables and MSW in two separate containers. And then, you can't hear?
No, they don't, they don't do that, actually. I actually was, I had, I'm going to the dump now again, but for a long time I had somebody pick up the stuff at my house. And they gave you two barrels, one was recyclable, one was other. But they put them in the exact same truck.
Yeah.
Because they, the guy told me, he says, "There's no market for the recyclables and they just send them all to the same place." That's what he told me. I'm just, I'm saying, I watched them take both things and put them exactly in the same hole in the same truck.
So I can't say for sure that they sometimes don't do that. And there was a period of time where they had an approval to do that from the state when the first had the markets banned because of contamination in China. So there was a period of time when that was happening. I can only speak for what I see. Trash gets collected in two barrels from my house with two separate containers and it does go over and get processed at zero waste facility for the recyclables and the trash.
I had duly up until three, four months ago and they...
But I can't, I can't say for sure that every hauler does that. Keep in mind, things will probably change because, one, there's a waste ban and, two, the cost is no longer going to be zero. Those things will drive changes.
You probably were at a fire at the end of last weekend. I saw some pictures online and they said it was a deep-seated fire and it looked like there was quite a bit of non-ash on top of the surface. I mean, to get a fire going, you have to have material that's burnable. I don't know, are they allowed to put like 10% of their material in there or if they get backed up, they're allowed to, they're allowed to do that, correct?
Yeah. So the landfill over in Carver, right near the town line, is a ash landfill and a bypass waste landfill. So they're allowed to do that. At one time they were allowed only to keep that material separate, but they can commingle it up to, I think, 25% solid waste. So, yeah. There is, there is material that does go in there. And that's meant to happen during power outages or times when the facility can't take the material.
They lose one of the...
Generate.
Covanta just made a deal with Born.
Yeah.
Take their ash.
Covanta has, does have agreements with Born, but they also have that facility also. So right now they have two outlets for the material. And this one is closing, that's why they need the deal with Born. Yeah. That's my understanding of it. Anyways.
All right, we don't mean to hold you up, sorry.
Nope, please ask questions as you go. It's a lot, makes for a better discussion. So primary future options that we looked at for the community, one I will call the no action alternative, which means the town gets out of the solid waste business and some communities have done that. That's the zero level of service option. And in that case, all homeowners would use the subscription service. So they'd pay a local hauler, you'd have a number of haulers, like you do now, collecting it wholesale.
That one's not going to happen, so...
Yeah. But it is an option and it's worthy to look at. Second one is that the town acquires the Route 28 transfer station, operates it for town residents. And remaining residents, if they don't want to buy a sticker for whatever the cost of the sticker would be, would use subscription service. And I put down a sub option, although I didn't do much with it here, it was just if the town of Carver was to join in, and they have shown some interest in that. They could also be a participant in that, shall we say. And then the third option is town-wide curbside collection. So I'll go through some of the costs. So subscription service currently is $432 a year on average, depending on who does it. And there's a material management cost also for trash and recyclables that will be added on in some way because right now these haulers are able to dump for free. So there's no cost currently. So we would expect that the cost would go up for anybody that's collecting the material because we would expect that they would add on the cost for disposal and processing and disposal of the recyclables.
So, I'm sorry, today's price is roughly 36 a month?
Yeah, roughly.
And on January 1st, you would add $130 a year, guesstimate, per household?
And once again, that's based on the amount of refuse that has been reported, which I do believe is, and recyclables, which I do believe is a bit high.
Thank you.
Okay. So that is $562 a year. And please, these are not perfect numbers. They might look rounded, but I try to keep it consistent, but there's a lot of flexibility. But for comparative purposes, they should be good to think about. Option two, this one here is probably the hardest to put dollar figures on because of the current state at the CMW and some of the agreements and the situations that are going on in there. Nothing's, things have not been finalized on this facility. So we, what we did was we looked at it and there's also a big difference in price depending on how many people buy tickets because you have so much fixed costs, whether the purchase of the facility or the operation and maintenance or some capital improvements. And the more people that use the facility, the lower the price would be. Or conversely, the less people that use it, the higher price it would be on a per-household cost. So the capital costs, that includes purchasing the facility based on a middle valuation that was done for it, appraisal, and also some improvements that would be needed. Now, they have agreed to do some improvements, so this number may be slightly lower than you've seen in the past, if you've seen some numbers, because as I went through it and took a look at it, determined that some of the improvements would be made and therefore there would not be a need to add those to the cost. And then operational cost to run the facility, including hauling the waste and getting it out of there and bringing it over to a processing facility, would be about $125 per household. And then the material management, because there's more with the processing of the recyclables than it is with the other options.
Well, not everybody's going to buy into that, so...
No. So I'll try to get there.
Because that'll change your costs considerably, obviously.
I'll try to get there.
Excellent.
So that would add, that would add another $170 a year, which would be about $295 a year for the people that use the facility if you had 4,600 people that use this household using the facility.
Which is everybody.
No, which is about half the town.
The people that are currently there would...
All right, they're plenty, 4,600, okay.
Right. So, and the other folks would obviously be using the curbs, the subscription service, so their costs would be higher.
Right.
Can I...
Yes, sir.
Now, the capital costs, that's per year, and that's to cover what?
The capital costs cover the purchase of the facility.
Right.
As well as improvements to the compacters and...
And that's broken down over how many years?
10 years.
Okay, now, you do understand that it's a very dynamic situation with the district.
I understand that. I don't understand all the dynamics.
Yeah.
But I do know it's dynamic.
Part of it is that if we took it over or went to an IMA with Carver, inter-municipal agreement, is that there's money in the kitty of the district. There's actually money in there over and above what's necessary for unfunded liabilities, which we're going to pay off. We're going to put that aside into a trust for the unfunded liabilities. There's money over and beyond, above that. So of that, Carver and Wareham own about 66% of whatever's left over. So we own, technically, we own 2/3 of the value of the Rochester property already. Benson Brook reverts back to Marion upon cessation of the transfer station operation by the district for the cost of $1. That's how it was set up. So we can bring the cost of, the capital costs down and also, just so you know, it can't, it won't affect what you're going to do tonight. Marion has actually submitted a proposal for withdrawal and we're going to meet again next Thursday, I believe, to continue conversation of that. So if that happens, it could be a totally different look of what the district's going to do. I just, it's a moving target and...
That certainly is what it seems to be, yeah.
So just so we know, the money end of it...
I don't profess to be an expert on those agreements.
As far as what's there, if the district did just turn into administrative and not operational, so that a lot of that capital cost is, it's there and projected, but it doesn't have to come out of and be covered by the cost of the stickers.
Yeah.
If we utilize the funds that are available.
I thought, I thought you just said that they were being put in trust for...
Only a portion of it. About $550,000 would go into a trust or go into a prepay if the district...
For unfunded liabilities.
Correct.
Okay.
But right now, we should have by the end of the year a total of 1.2 million. We're going to sell some of the equipment that we wouldn't need if we continued it as a district or if we purchased the Rochester facility. Again, we own, between ourselves and Carver, we own 2/3 of value of that, so the purchase price comes down. It's just not, you know, it's 525,000. It's, 1/3 of that is what we would have to, from my understanding, is how we wrote up the new agreement, amended, restated agreement, which we haven't voted on yet in this town.
It certainly is up in the air from everything I've been able to tell and hear. I don't know all the things. I think, I think it's best to look at it as is and then if things ferret themselves out, you can adjust some of the cost. But, you know, the dollars, the value of the land, whether you sell it or whether you keep it or how you do it, what you do with those dollars is, that's a policy decision you folks will have to make.
Right, but the capital aspect of it could come down to...
Sure, if you don't have to pay anything for it, it would be cheaper.
I think that one of the things we struggled with was, let's say the district did dissolve and we received a payment of the difference between the, whatever the assets for the OPEB and other, and then there was a cash disbursement. If you were doing a curbside, you could use that to help buy some of the containers. So we looked at it, what if you did that? What if you were purchasing it for the, using it to get the other, the other property, like you said, and we could go down sort of the rabbit hole of that? And the way we looked at it was the best way was to keep it as of, if you look at it today without all the ifs, because we're trying to work with the, or well, the district's trying to work and get the best possible deal, I believe, you know, revolve in point. But that could go one of two or three or a dozen ways.
Basically, one of two ways.
Yeah, so...
So I'm just saying it's, it's correct in the assumptions that you've made, but it's a moving target and just because it's there doesn't mean that's, that's going to be the true. The operational costs are probably pretty much right on target, as far as I can see. But the capital cost for the land and whatnot...
Could be different.
Could be considerably lower.
Let me...
So anyhow, just so that we're aware of that.
Well, I just have one question, maybe this is for you. What, so the towns each have a third share of that property? It wasn't done by prorata population?
Well, you know, it depends, it depends on which week you're, which month you're at the meeting. Sometimes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's going to depend on what Attorney Bowen tells us.
So, well...
We get it.
The proposal's been that the liability go prorata and the dispersments go in a third.
Correct. But, but the pendulum swung at the last meeting, they did make a proposal, there were a couple hiccups in it. So...
Yeah, one of them's right up my professional alley.
Yeah, so we pushed back on it and we're going to meet again and hopefully we can, we can all come out of it getting what we want. And if not, then, you know, it'll...
What we'll live with.
We'll get through it.
I seem to remember that when we signed that agreement, we thought we were talking about a third to each person. I, it's a, my memory's a little bit sketchy, but I don't think so. And I think we talked about it because we had the guy right in here and we had the conversation. And when we did it, we definitely were talking about sharing a third of each of the process. Had nothing to do with the number of people in your community.
As far as how the aspects will help.
Some of it was based on the, some of the deals originally were based on the EQV, the equalized valuation. So that's our land wealth plus our residents' ability to pay. And that shifted over the years from the, from the original agreement because, believe...
You can't be shifting the agreement, the agreement's the agreement.
Yeah, well, no, that's what it was, EQV shifts. Your EQV shifts year to year.
It's, it's what they, they moved into the restated amended agreement.
Yeah.
Is to do the third, third, third on the dispersals. But on the original, when it was set up, it was the EQV, correct?
Right.
So we paid the lion's share because... So, we paid the lion's share because we were larger. It's, it's, it's kind of very, it's interesting.
It depends on which funnel you want to send the numbers down?
Depends on who has the most votes at the district meeting.
And Carver brought the, brought the land, obviously.
We rent that. We rent that for a tidy sum and we pay the taxes on it, too. ADM owns it. And.
Been there a long time.
And, and they run it under Juan Kinko. And we lease it from them and pay the taxes on it. And then Covanta covers everything. It's a pass-through program. But let, let Mr. Savioni do his.
All right, finish your process, yeah.
Thanks, but I wanted to, you know, at least start exploring that topic.
So, to your, your point, select man, Tropiano, the number of users will change the cost per home. So, for instance, if three thousand stickers were only sold, it would go up to three hundred and sixty-one dollars. And if five thousand stickers, it would be down to two eighty-four. Just kind of give you a little bit of a fluctuation and a range, depending on who, who decides to use that, if it's, if it's on a sticker system. And then this is the transfer station, some of the things that could use some improvement, some of which are being done, or at least promised to be done. Option three, townwide curbside collection. And we received three good proposals from three firms that operate in the area. They were ABC, Republic, and Waste Management. We had had four folks take out the specifications and you received three good proposals from them. And we're in the process of evaluating. We've met with several of the folks. So, we used, you know, kind of ballpark costs from those because you haven't finally negotiated anything or haven't got to the final spot yet on that. So, based on what you have for pricing as part of the proposals that's in process now, that would translate to a cost of three hundred and thirteen dollars a year per household if you did the whole town by curbside collection. So, slightly more than the, no?
I am not in favor of a townwide curbside collection. I've been there, done that. In fact, I think I signed the original Covanta agreement way back when.
Actually, I did.
I did, too.
I signed it, I signed the original agreement with.
What, nineteen eighty-two?
No, no, not that one. I'm talking about the one where we.
I gave him the, I gave him the original documents. I found him.
We went to the zero.
Yeah, what do you call it there?
What, wherever you head, that's, that's your folks' decision where you head. I'm here to help you try to understand the options and some of the costs associated with them.
Was that twenty-one years or something?
On the contract for number three, what's the timeframe per contract? How long does these contracts last?
This would be, this was put out as a proposal for a five-year contract with two one-year extensions possible associated with it.
And each extension, is the price fixed or does it go up?
They have an increase on an annual basis.
Two percent.
About two percent is what we asked for in the thing. And we haven't finished negotiations on that yet.
Five-year, two-one-year extensions?
Five years and two-one-year extensions are possible on that.
Yep.
And, you know, the reason for going with at least, based on the solid waste market now, five years is a long time in solid waste. Because the markets are very fluct, you know, fluctuate a lot. However, this is proposed to be a fully automated system so that you, every resident would get the cots with it. And in order to amateurize the cots over a reasonable period of time, it doesn't make sense to do anything shorter than a five-year project because they have to pay for the cots. If you did a longer period of time, seven or eight years, they would amateurize them over seven or eight years. However, it's more risk on the contractor because who knows what solid waste is going to look like for disposal in seven to eight years and recyclables particularly. So, five years is a pretty good period of time when you'll get a reasonable price and, because they have less, a little less risk.
What are they, what, sixty-five dollars, eighty-five dollars a cart?
Yeah, they're, they're a little bit less than that, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, they vary based on the size, but they're in the fifty to sixty-dollar a cart range.
And they got an expectancy of what, five or ten years?
Yeah, I would suggest they, they should last with normal wear and tear on them. You know, a wheel will go off here and there. And that's under the contractor to replace those. Without, unless the, unless the homeowner or somebody, you know, really smashes it or steals it or something like that, they should last ten years. That's what they, that's their anticipated life. And some of them will last longer if they're taken care of.
Are you talking about those big bin things?
I am, yep.
So, over five years, it's twelve bucks a year, about thirteen bucks a year, right?
Did, did, did you have questions on the cost, though, or just?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I just, I was sick of having just slides without pictures, so I threw in some of the trucks.
There's a lot of things to figure, though. There's, it's a little more than this. Because what about, for instance, if you go to the dump, you can go with as much stuff as you want, as many as you want. This here, you get two barrels and then you're in trouble.
No, the dump is inaccurate. It'd have to be a pay-as-you-throw system.
It would be what?
Yeah, it would have to be a pay-as-you-throw system.
Okay, but that's not what he showed over here.
That's not what he's showing.
But that's, I think you'd be, he's giving you the costs on the average household. So, if you, you'd have to do it pay-as-you-throw. So, your family's going to be paying more at the end of the day. And, you know, senior might be paying less. Is that the?
The payment is, that's a whole different discussion.
Yeah, I mean, you can do the same thing with curbside pickup.
Yeah.
You can do the same thing with curbside. They, in Mother's Vineyard, they sell you stickers. And you put the stickers on the bags and they take the bags that have the stickers on them and they throw them away. And as many stickers as you want, you can put out a hundred bags if you want.
Their, solid waste is a funny business because so many towns do it very differently. And there's a lot of different ways to pay for the program and whether it's a pay-as-you-throw or whether it's a, on the tax rate or whether it's. However, however towns do it varies very much. So, my suggestion to the town is that you come up with your preferred option first and then work out how the payment of that option would be. If you, if assuming you're going to provide some level of service to the town.
How many times have you worked with in, in trash business?
How many times?
How many towns have you worked with?
How many, oh, town.
Municipals.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, so it's hundred, two-hundred?
Probably not two-hundred, no.
Okay, so let's say a hundred, just for the sake of it. So, what is the norm, what is the most common denominator in the hundred towns?
Currently, currently, the most common denominator for towns, most towns that I've seen lately is curbside collection with automated services. And most of them put it on the tax rate.
Automated services and they put it on the tax rate?
A lot of towns put it on the tax rate, yeah.
So, what happens if you put it on the tax rate and I get my two barrels and I have big house and I need three barrels or four barrels?
So, some towns provide an outlet service for that or some towns will provide a extra barrel for additional fee. It, it varies very greatly.
So, I have a very small household and.
It was nothing.
And I, you know, put the scraps out on the garden and, you know, do all sorts of things to, I love going to the dump. I mean, I've been going to the dump since I was a little girl when I went with my dad. And I love going to the dump now. I don't understand how, how going totally by the town works. Because that's not fair to me. If it goes on the tax rate and I have to subsidize his house, that's not fair.
Well, you know the same.
And furthermore, if I like going to the dump, I'm going to prefer to pay the, whatever it is and get my outing once a week. Or, let's do it even better. In the summertime, lots of people have cookouts. Do you know what dead lobsters smell like the next day? If you had to wait a week.
About two hundred communities do. I do it in my own house. You wrap it up. I've got the curbside collection. It doesn't go crazy.
You stop and chop bags and, you know, put the lid on the garbage can and you won't smell it in the house unless you have the garbage can in the house.
I don't have it in the house. I put it outside.
At some point, we have a social compact.
This is why I love doing this type of work because people get passionate about their trash.
I am passionate about my trash.
And I think that's, I think that's good.
Anyway, so this is just about options.
But this is conversation that needs to be had.
Just so you know, too.
Need to have this conversation.
And it was on the tax rate.
Who's going to pay, the decision of who's going to pay for the disposal hasn't been made. The, the bids were based upon pickup, pickup in, in transportation.
And disposal.
And disposal.
Disposal would be either additional or the, or the town would assume it.
Right, that's the, that's within these costs, just so people understand.
Well, that's what the figures are showing.
Right.
Because I, I added and I readjusted it and came up pretty close to what you did, too. One was higher, one was lower. One was three thirteen on the button. But.
Run the ball back.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I would expect that for the transfer station, too.
That's what he put in there, disposal costs.
Right. Plus, plus the capital cost, which I, you know, that's anyhow.
Yeah, when we talk about capital costs, we talk about the capital, the cart costs. And we have extra money coming from the district. You can use it to offset one or the other. So, that's why keeping it level makes sense because it could go either way.
So, if the town's going to pick up the costs of the curbside, I would assume they could pick up the cost of the transfer station operation and otherwise.
That's totally.
If we're going to do it, no, but if we're going to do it as a individual household, we're going to pay whatever the cost is. I don't know how you can force them to do that.
Well, what you're saying is historically fif, roughly fifty percent of the people go to the dump with their sticker and fifty percent of the people go with curbside.
Correct. That's based on the information you have.
The information that you have right now, okay. So, say you're off by ten percent, who cares? It's, it's not, it's not money. It's, you know, it, it's a concept, but it's not money. So, if things stay the same and fifty percent of people like going to the dump because they remember going with their dad or they like going to the dump because they get to see their buddies or, you know, it's a, it's a morning away from, whatever. I don't see how, I, I don't see the equity of making, of townwide curbside forced into the tax rate because I wouldn't use it anyway.
Okay, Alan's next.
First of all, you have to understand that the state of Massachusetts has a bunch of different articles and bills pending as far as trash goes, et cetera. One of the most serious issues is actual disposal of food waste. Those costs are going to be tremendously high and how they're going to be handled. So, as far as what we're discussing, a lot of this is going to be out of our hands anyways coming down the line. Just so you understand, you need to look at that, number one. Number two, when we talk about equity and stuff, well, the simple fact is when you get old and don't have kids in school, you're paying a lot of money in your taxes for school you don't use. So, when someone complains about, I don't think it's fair that I pay this or that, that's the way life is. If you don't like it, go, go find a different place to live. It's that simple. Please let me finish.
Come on, let Alan finish, please.
You know, I just don't like when people use that as, as a reason, that's all. Because it's what we all do. Someone paid for us, we pay for someone else going forward. The way it works, you know, in Nevada is we all have to have basically Republic. And Republic comes every two weeks, takes the trash. We pay, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a quarter and that's the ballgame. There's no choice. My concern at the end of the day for all this is, what do we provide that's sustainable? And we'll be able to work for a reasonable amount of time and cost our residents the least amount of money possible. I don't care about whether you use it a lot or don't use it a lot. What's the best overall for the town of Wareham? Because that's what the decision has to be. Is it sustainable and what the cost is? Everything else is bullshit.
Can I just ask you to explain what you think might be coming down from the state? You said there's several.
You can't sit there and, and open up basically more places where you can just burn stuff anymore. There's, there's complete moratoriums on that. They're looking at maybe changing that. They're looking at changing how the streams go. Because right now, there is no recycling in Massachusetts, no matter what anyone tells you. There is no real recycling.
I agree.
Because there's no facilities to do it.
Right.
And this is a serious issue. The state is looking at trying to figure out what to do. And if you just look at what's happening, there's going to be changes. But the bottom line is, at least in Massachusetts, every time there's a change, it costs us all more money.
Right.
It's not going to go down. These expenses are going to go up.
Where, you know, if you've got a buy-in now that will solve the problem for five or seven years, then that's something we have to seriously consider.
How about if we have everybody?
It's a temporary way to control it, but, you know, long-term, the trash issue's not going to get any better.
Well, nothing does.
What would happen?
What you're saying is that the state is going to mandate certain ways of doing it.
Yes, well.
So.
But who knows? Who knows? Can I?
Yeah.
What would happen if we just required everybody to get transfer station stickers?
Yeah.
Eighty-two hundred households for that.
Yeah.
That would drop the cost significantly, wouldn't it?
Well, you could put the transfer station on the tax rate, right? Pay it that way, right?
I mean, that's.
Well, we'd have to do it through fees because putting it at the tax rate would require an override.
You can't require a fee. You can't require someone to, to purchase the service if they can, if they have another way to dispose of it. I mean, you could through the Board of Health, I guess, require proof of.
Disposal.
Of a disposal. And it would be the individual's choice.
Now, that's a whole level of bureaucracy I don't think we want to get into.
I mean, it's how you look at it.
I don't have, I don't know, I don't know of any towns that require anybody to buy a sticker.
So, what would happen if we did?
No.
Now, what would happen if we did forty-six hundred or we had a sliding scale on the households for the curbside collection?
So, we, we've had that discussion with the haulers.
I know we have. That's why I brought it up.
And the haulers, the haulers won't tell us yet. We're asking if that would possibly go with the sliding scale like we've seen other places. They, they base their pricing on the, doing the townwide curbside collection are pretty damn close to the townwide curbside collection. So, we're waiting to hear whether or not they would.
And if they did, the price would go like this.
Price will go up, for sure.
Because, you know, the number of miles on the road and number of houses they hit.
And you're going to have the same situation. You're going to have a number of trucks driving around on the same situation that you have.
Alan?
My question is to Derek also. Marion, of course, has curbside pickup now. They've had it, I think, for almost a year, even though they have their transfer station.
They actually had curbside collection before, but it was by Town Forces.
Yes. And they basically, I believe they add it to the tax bill. They don't, it's not, it's not part of the tax rate?
Yeah, they used to do it in-house. They stopped doing it with their own employees, went out to a curbside. And then they added it to their, to their tax bill.
They did an override, correct?
I don't know if they did an override.
They had to to cover the cost of it.
I don't know if they had to do an override.
No, you don't have to do an override. You can do it as.
But they're going to, they're also going to.
Get under the two and a half.
They're also planning to run their transfer station.
That's what they say they think they're going to do.
They're going to try it and see if they can, if they can do it.
I would take a look and see if we can get some numbers from them of what, since they have years with the history, what it is. I mean, they have so few customers compared to us.
It's, it's.
Oh, yeah.
It's roughly, it's similar in price. I, I actually worked on their curbside collection program, too. And it's similar in price to what you're seeing from the vendors you have here. Because there's a couple of things that have changed a little bit.
I mean, the bottom line is, is what is the cost?
It's on the tax base.
You know, per, you know, per person.
It's on their bills.
Because that's, that's what makes and breaks this for all of us.
Yeah. And that's why we tried to do it on a per homeowner cost. That way, it's a, it's an easier comparison. Nothing's perfect.
If you do the, if you do it on the tax base, on the homes, is it, then, you know, the ones with the more expensive homes are paying the lion's share.
Right.
And those with the smaller, less costly homes are paying a smaller amount, you know, on the average because it's built into the taxes.
That doesn't mean that that's the usage, though, because usage is the same way.
It's a social system of trash removal.
See, I'm concerned for me because, look, I have seven people living in my own, seven kids. And we have a trash compactor and there's no way I'm getting through the week with two barrels.
Yeah, you're a high-volume solid waste generator.
And that's even compacting it.
Yeah.
You know, I can get five bags into one bag in a compactor.
And honestly, there's going to be a lot of situations. And this is why it comes up so often and people get passionate about it because it's not, it's not even, some people recycle more. Right now, that's more expensive. Some people recycle more. Some people produce more trash. Some people compost themselves. So, it, you're not going to have any particular household that is like the perfect thing. It's not like.
To be honest with you, I've been taking my trailer, my dump trailer and putting the stuff in my dump trail and taking it to Bourne, paying the tipping fee and just dumping it.
And, and actually, you're lucky that you have that as an option.
To go there and lift all the stuff out and put it into the stupid thing to compact it and all that. It's, it's, it's a pain in the neck. But I can go there and just lift my dump trail, boom, dump, gone, see you later.
And, you know, that's a benefit that you are fairly close to Bourne, which would, will allow that. There's, there's actually not that many landfills in the state that you can continue to go to. It's, you know, as, as was pointed out, the Solid Waste Master Plan essentially had a moratorium on waste energy facilities and, you know, nobody's citing new landfills, let's face it.
No, that's for sure.
A lot of the trash disposal is being hauled out of state by rail.
Well, Bourne just extended theirs.
Yeah, Bourne's in the process. They're not there yet.
They got quite a deal going over there.
Yeah, they make a lot of money. They want to ship all the trash out of Africa. That's the latest.
To where?
Africa, that's the latest thing.
Oh, for some of the recyclables?
Yeah, you don't have to go around Cape Horn.
You know what's interesting?
Middle of the country.
Judy?
What's interesting is, you know, the, the liquid that you get back when they pack everything in, they get a liquid back?
Yep.
They've been pumping it out. They've been pumping it out, and they take it and dump it, and they've actually asked us to take it and process it in our plant.
The treatment plant?
Yeah.
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 Our sewer plant. We don't, it's not possible right now because of where we sit, but, you know, it's, it's something they've asked us to do.
Yeah, and as you see more emerging contaminants, you need to be careful about that, too, so.
Judy?
Yeah, um, follow up again on what Alan said. If the state is looking at the question of trash, and, you know, we can't keep burying ourselves in our own waste, which is really what it comes down to. What is Covanta facing from the state, or from the regulatory authorities?
Me, I'm sorry, you, you, I need a little bit more.
They burn everything.
Correct.
Okay? And there is no, it's single stream, and just plain is. So if, if the state is coming down with regulations that say, you gotta do, and you gotta do, what's gonna happen to Covanta, which is what we're thinking our stuff would be going? So his, his question, or his comment about what the state is doing, is even more scary because that plant may have to disappear in five years, may have to re-engineer itself in five years.
The majority of, um, changes to waste energy plants are based on the air pollution and air pollution controls. That's usually where there's the extra, uh, additional things that, that are attached onto it.
Did you say pollution controls?
Air pollution. Yeah, what goes up the stack.
More effective filters and stuff.
Yeah.
And it requires multiple burning processes a lot of times.
Yeah.
So that's all controllable, but the problem is that the state's not gonna close down existing facilities where they have no more available, because then they have a situation where there'll be no place for anything to go.
I've not, I've not heard of anything saying that Covanta would not be able to continue.
I've talked to them directly several times. They, that's not in their ballpark right now.
And just to clarify, all options use Covanta.
Right.
Yeah, trash is gonna go some way, that's where it's going.
And the, the recyclables, and, you know, there, there are waste bans, and with, um, where the market's headed, it's highly likely that you'll be recycling more in the future.
I actually saw a plant.
That you're currently adding.
Okay, I, I was in a plant in Stoughton. Have you been in the, the plant in Stoughton?
I'm sorry?
Have you been in that plant in Stoughton where they process?
A one, yeah.
That is pretty amazing. You bring this stuff in, you dump it right in the middle of the floor. They scoop it up and they put it on top of their chute, and there's all these little bays all the way down like this, and the stuff goes down, and the metal falls out into one thing, and the paper falls into another one. They have suction that takes stuff out. They got blowers that blow stuff out, and they literally sort all the material. So it's possible. They can do it if they want to. It's just that it's gotta get more, it's gotta be more valuable, otherwise it doesn't work.
Yeah, are enforced. Because you do have waste bans that, if they're enforced.
Well, if they enforce it, it'll become more valuable, because the price will go up. You see, so, like everything else, anytime you, you force somebody to do something, price goes up.
Right, right now, there are not sufficient markets, and that's, that's been the issue.
Right.
There was a time, not that long ago, where paper was, had value, and some of the commodities had value, but right now, there's not a lot of that. Just cardboard right now is even more, really hasn't any kind of value.
Unfortunately, but, okay.
So, uh, just a summary of what your options are. So for no action, it's about five hundred and sixty bucks. For the transfer station, the people that used it, if it stayed with stick a system similar to what you have, would be about three hundred bucks, and about five sixty for the folks that didn't use it. And townwide curbside collection would be three hundred and ten, three hundred and fifteen bucks per household. And if it was on the tax rate, it would be about two hundred dollars for the average single-family home, or for sixty-seven cents for a thousand dollars of assessed value. And that is based on, uh, like you said, the larger homes, the more expensive homes would pay more. That's, so that's, in summary. And recommended next steps, um, you still have a agreement with CMAS that's in discussions. Uh, we would recommend that you finalize that. It doesn't have a put or pay clause in it, so it doesn't require you to bring material there, but it gives you, I say, a preferred rate based on what else is happening in the state for solid waste disposal. Continue discussions and negotiations with the collection proposers, because they, we just opened the proposals the other day, and haven't finished that process. And continue discussions and negotiations with CMW, and that's probably a longer process, but I think it's pretty clear from the discussions tonight that there's work to be done there. Decide on the best option, and, uh, our process to come up with what the best option is. And then finalize a plan and develop a schedule to get there, because at the end of this year, uh, the trash, the costs go up, and. You the deal that, uh, you know?
When, um, the proposals that you got back from the, I guess you asked for, there were four, but three responded.
Four, four folks took them out.
Okay, so they.
And three responded, okay, so was, was there, um, in that
proposal g- package, picking up the town's refuse included in, in there? In other words, if Joe, Joe Smith gets the contract, and it's three hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-two cents per household, it, does that include getting all of the town's trash, the municipal trash, picked up?
No.
That was not in the proposal?
In the proposal was a separate cost. Most of the town's, uh, trash is picked up in different-sized containers, other than just the dump, the little, uh, you know, the carts.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the front-end loader would come in, or some of them are compacters in some situations. Those are carried a separate cost, so I didn't include those costs here. But yes, they did give prices to do that work also, to continue to collect. But those were not used for the valuation. We kept it on the household cost. That way, it was more even, shall we say.
It would have been.
Does that make sense?
No, because, um, to me, if you're getting a proposal for a service, you wanna know the whole service, and the service is picking up the municipal trash, which may.
I apologize, I obviously wasn't clear. The proposals did include dealing with the service for the town, but the costs were separated.
Do you have those costs?
Uh, not with me. But I do have the costs.
You have the costs?
They're based on a per yard basis and a collection time, so.
Yes?
I've been playing with this for probably seven or eight years, from the time I questioned about how the CMW was running financially and everything else, which kind of aggravates me. They never follow through properly. Again, using Nevada as an example, and also several other states, um, and I think Derek and I have talked about it as well. When you contract with, say, Republic, which is one of the biggest ones in the country that does this, you end up with a lower rate for the municipality if the whole town is under a contract with one carrier as well. So you do get a better rate than you'd go off and do it, say, if the town went to ABC for their, their trash, but ABC didn't get the contract for the town itself. So the answer to this is, it will cost the town less money at, on average, if they have a, one package for everything. The rates, the numbers will be different between the municipality and the individual, but the overall cost for the town and individuals will be less.
Hmm. That, that, that's true. It's just common sense, actually.
Is that, that basically it?
That's, that's pretty much it. I'm looking for some direction.
I just wanna, I'm not really a fan of putting it on the tax rate at all. And the reason why I'm not a fan of doing that is because that hits seniors and everybody else, you know, the same as somebody else, and so on and so forth. And I don't think that's fair and equitable. I think pay-as-you-go is a better deal. I, I like the idea of, if somebody puts out twenty bags of trash, they have to pay for that twenty bags of trash. And if somebody outputs out a half a bag of trash, they gotta pay for their bag of trash. You know, I'm way, and I don't care whether you did it at the landfill or at the curb. I'd prefer it at the curb. But if you didn't, it's okay, either place. But I'm still in favor of the town paying for it on a per ca- on, on the use basis. However, whoever uses the most pays the most, just as simple as that. And that's the way it should be. That's fair and equitable for everyone. And, and I'm always believer of fair and equitable.
Is what we're trying to do for SOW.
Huh?
Same thing we're trying to do for SOW.
Yeah, exactly. The same thing we've been trying to do for years for SOW, is make it fair and equitable for everybody. And that's, to me, that's the deal you have to do.
We handed that ball over to the other team, uh, it was like first and goal on the three. And it's still sitting there.
Yeah, I know, and it hasn't gone, believe me. And, and, you know, it's.
Not for nothing, but.
Not for nothing is, is because I think, you know, as far as that goes, I think there is some, uh, some apprehension on the district side. But, you know, at some point, you have to step up to the plate. Now, those, those numbers, the public records like anything else, and you gotta say, okay, it's time to take them to court and get the records, and make sure that every month, the court says, you gotta give them the, give them whatever it is, so they can do the billing. I mean, you get to the point, you gotta do it, get it over with, but we're not. We haven't pushed it that far. But it's, it's getting to the time where, in my opinion, we're gonna have to start thinking about something like that. But we'll talk about that as time goes on.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda tonight.
It's not on the agenda.
We really back in here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to see if we could get consensus on one item, and that's that. Option one is not an option, that not doing anything. We, that's, we can't leave our, our residents in the, in the wind on this.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta, you're gonna come up with an agreement for how much you're gonna pay per ton.
Well, we've already, we've got, we know the numbers now for how much we're gonna pay through Covanta for the, for the next five years, and it's seventy-seven dollars and sixty-five cents year one, and then there's an escalator the years after, going to seventy-nine, fifty-nine, eighty-one, fifty-eight.
So basically, that negotiation is done.
Right, that's essentially, there's a contract, um, we've been taking it, uh, we just took the contract from Marion, changed some, some things around. I'm getting that over to Rich, and I expect that to be in your hands essentially next week.
Awesome.
That, that offer was made a year ago, in October.
Well, that's awesome. I mean, we should do that. We gotta do something. We're running out of time. December's almost here.
Yeah, the other thing, too, is if any course of action we decide upon requires town meeting action, that warrant, I mean, we can do a special town meeting, I suppose, if we have to, before the end of the year. This is a big enough issue to warrant that. But if we wanna try to get this solved by the end of October, uh, and it requires any town meeting action, that warrant closes on the twenty-second.
If we don't get it done by the, by October, then we're gonna have to have a special meeting, because we gotta do something before January.
Absolutely.
One way or the other.
So, you know, that's another, that's another consideration, is, which in our timeline here, is, you know, are we gonna try to, are we gonna try to accelerate the decision-making here, which is gonna probably mean some, you know, less public input as opposed to more public input, just because we don't have the time to, you know, do a whole bunch of workshops or anything like that before we put something on the town meeting warrant? So we gotta figure it out.
I can tell you, sitting on this board, I would hate to come up to January one and be the guy that said, well, we're gonna take no action.
Yeah.
Okay? And not as far, not while I'm sitting here, it's not gonna, well, because that, you know, you take no action, you know, the residents have all the right in the world to be as ticked off as possible.
Oh, absolutely.
We talked about this, what, January last year, knowing it was coming, and all of a sudden, we get to the point where we have no action.
You know this was coming down the road, ten years ago, five years ago, and nothing's been done. So now you're in a position where it's like, holy miracle, what are we gonna do? So, and, and just so you know, that these waste management companies, or refuse, um, companies, they need some lead time. I mean, you can't make the decision at the end of November and, and be guaranteed that they're gonna be hitting the road on January one.
No, because they have to increase, if you select one company, they've got to increase their presence here, if it's one of the existing companies, fourfold.
They can make adjustments, but they need some time, too, but.
Drivers, trucks.
I mean, if, if push came to shove, you could leave curbside the way it is, and, and somehow try to keep the transfer station open. So it just wouldn't be a better deal for those getting curbside collection. The service would still be there, they'd just have to pay like they're paying now. So much per household. The transfer station, well, there's, there's possibilities and options, but, and, and we, we've increased the meetings we're having with, um, Carver, and also, uh, you know, time-wise, and also the number of meetings we're having as the district. And, um, something, I, I guess I'm, I'm a person, I'm more of an optimist, you know, the glass is half-full and not half-empty, that will resolve it. And, um, to, to keep the transfer station operational, even if it's on a short-term basis, in order to not have the situation where, you know, you don't have that option anymore, and you have to go with curbside.
Well, the districts, you know, the district's been dragging their feet quite a bit, kinda come up with a plan for them.
Well.
Caused us to kinda hold off.
Well, it's, it's the vote. It's how the votes go. It's, you've got nine people on the board, and if it's five-four, then, and we're on the four side, we got the smelly end of the stick, and not the plain sentimental stick.
So that's problematic when you're trying to get to a point by January.
You're telling me?
That we started way back, when we, when we.
I, I think there's been a plan in place, in, in, uh, in order.
Nobody's telling anybody?
Well, yeah, that, that, you know, this is what we wanna do.
So you haven't gotten to the, uh.
And it's not, and it's not, and it's not necessarily the people on the board.
Yeah, well.
So, just, just to be said.
Well, they, we need to.
People in the background, yeah.
And, and you know what? And when it comes down to it, at some point, we've gotta do something for us. I mean, you know, we just do.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, I know that, I know that it doesn't sound nice, and it's not fun, but it's gonna happen, you know?
Is there any further information we would like to get?
No, I, I think he's given me everything that I need.
I have a question.
Judy?
Are you done? Are you, is our contract with you done?
Pretty much. I, I said I would continue on to help out and do a little bit more, and also to help negotiations with contractors and our CMAS, if necessary. I'm offering that.
Okay, so, um, one of the things.
Under the current agreement that we have.
Yeah. One of the things that I think that I didn't hear was explored, was picking up the Carver population to keep that transfer.
No, that's, that's how you probably would, would get.
But I don't see the numbers here, so what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, yeah, but that, in a perfect world, the forty-six hundred average stickers that we've sold, and that's kind of a, sort of an average, um, you're gonna, you're gonna, if, if the curbside collection is attractive enough, you're gonna lose some of those.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if.
So, but that, that number would probably reflect Carver joining in. I mean, they, they sell about eighteen hundred stickers.
Okay, so.
But, but, you know, don't, I would be.
And what's their population?
They have about tw- they have about four thousand homes. I don't know, the population's quite a bit small.
The homes, yeah.
So, I mean, you could say forty-six hundred from Wareham and eighteen hundred from there, but I, I think you'd be fooling yourself in your actual generation of, of revenue coming back, because I don't think you'd have the forty-six and eighteen would be what, sixty, uh, sixty-four? You're not gonna have sixty-four hundred stickers sold, I don't believe. I think you'd probably be lucky if you could sell forty-six hundred of five thousand if the shift goes towards a, a lower cost for curbside.
Right.
So, I mean, you have to be practical in, in your numbers and how you're looking at it.
Half the town, and they only have to pay forty dollars or fifteen dollars.
Fifteen?
Fifteen dollars or forty dollars. If that price goes up to a couple hundred bucks, I don't, I, I wouldn't guess how many people would migrate over.
Or even a hundred and a quarter.
And then that drops the people that go to the transfer station, and raises the cost for everybody else. So, I mean, it's not an easy answer to the question, because there's a lot of still unknowns.
The other thing with Carver is, uh, they have just roughly half the population we do.
Right, and they don't have the summer influx, but.
Like eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven, which, you know.
Half the year, year-round homes, so.
Thirty-two hundred homes.
Well, the question is this. Let's, let's talk realistically. It's September one. Right? There's a lot of negotiation. If you wanted to put this thing together and say, okay, we're gonna take over the transfer station with Carver, and you started in negotiations with them, whatever was gonna happen, and you get rid of the district, and you do all these things that you wanna do, what's really the reality, knowing how government works, let alone these other sub-boards, so to speak, were, to be ready by the end of December?
We need five votes. On, on the district board, we need five votes. If we don't get five votes, the reality of being able to either drive, um, the process, to, to drive the process, either for an inter-municipal agreement and/or, um, with Carver, we need the five votes. If we don't get five votes, to, to, to accept a structured, um, agreement or, uh, with the district to, to utilize the land, then that's, that's a moot point. If, if Marion withdraws, if we can come to an agreement for the withdrawal, then we could continue as a district, assess the towns, restructure the, the district as we move forward, because we can always. Because we can always operate under the current agreement, not the best, but it's, it's something that, it's a live document. And then reshape the agreement to reflect what would be best operationally for the two towns that, that are left in the district. And, and how you would process forward. You could reshape the, the composition of the, of the representatives, you could have a select person, you could have a town administrator and a citizen-at-large from each town. So that you make sure that the fundamentals of the operation are soundly overseen by people who have the expertise to do so. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things you can.
I get what you're saying, Jim, but what's the real, realization?
Who the hell knows? Like I said, you've got, you have.
All right, so let's say it doesn't happen.
Nine people, yeah.
Let's say it doesn't happen, we can't get there by then, what do we do?
Yeah, what's plan B?
What's plan B?
I think we're on the, I would say this, we're on the cusp of, it's coming to a head, for lack of a better term. It's coming to a head on the, on the CMW side. On the other side, we need to figure, figure out which way we're going to head. You're, you're right, if, if it goes on the worst-case scenario, if the glass is half-empty, we may not have the option of running the transfer station there. That might go away, that decision could be out of our hands.
And, and that has been, this, this entire situation of what we're going to do at the end of 2020, whether the district continued or not, has been out there. And we, as a town, have done nothing until the last, I don't know, year to, to resolve, to resolve it. So, I mean, we put ourselves in this situation, someone that, you know, someone who's an expert in the field said, we should have done this five years ago.
Question.
Yeah, but we did, and here we are, right? I'll say that.
Huh?
Five years is a long time in solid ways. You know, my suggestion would be that you folks think about what process it would take to get to a decision on it. I mean, right now, I've been able to just pull together numbers and show you what the options are, you know, curbside collection and transfer station, based on what we know today, similar in cost, do-nothing alternative.
This doesn't tell me, what about if we did it by, per bag?
Per bag, if you think of the per bag as how you pay for it as opposed to what you do.
In other words, if somebody got stickers, you come to the place, you buy stickers, you throw them away.
What we've tried to do is separate the decision about, and the economics about what you do with how you pay for it. How you pay for it could be with bag fees, they could be with sticker and bag fees, they could be by the household, they could be on the tax rate. There's a number of different ways you can pay for the system, once you decide what the system is. And that takes a number of different iterations to get to what's the best option for that, too. You're not going to please everybody.
No, no.
Everybody, you know, there's a lot of people that are just not going to be, feel that it's fair, whatever you come up with.
Right, and that's, I mean, for instance, in, in the town I live in, it's, you pay two-hundred-and-fifty a year. They do curbside for recycling and your trash, but you have to do a pay-as-you-throw. So my family, I've, I've looked at it, we pay between six-fifty and seven-hundred dollars a year when you factor in the bags.
You've got two little kids.
We've got two little kids, a giant dog, and, you know, we, we put out for delivery from our groceries and, believe it or not, sometimes, and they have these big bags that drive me crazy, that have me stop doing it. Because it's just, it's terrible for the environment, even, oh, they say there's a recycling center.
I mean, you take a family like mine, and I'm sorry, we're big users of trash, we're the, we're the, I think we're the trash capital of the world, frankly, I tell them all the time, I think we're the trash capital of the world. But, you know, a system like this wouldn't be fair to us, we'd be undercharged mostly.
I'm sorry, I'm.
But we'd also have extra that we couldn't get rid of, which would have to be figured in somehow.
What, what system wouldn't be fair, I'm confused.
Just a straight pickup fee.
Okay, but if you go to the transfer station with one sticker fee, it's the same thing.
Right, but if I take, for, for fifteen bucks right now, I'm a senior, for fifteen bucks, I can go to the transfer station a hundred times, two-thousand times a year and throw trash away.
Is that fair?
No, it's not.
Okay.
No, I'm not saying that's fair either, what I'm trying to say is, is I'm one of the guys that abuses the system. Because I'm, you know, because of who I am, I, I have a big family.
Yeah.
Judy's.
You're on the high end.
And I'm on the low end.
The three of us are subsidizing you.
Yeah, there's no way.
Judy's on the low end and uses nothing.
Yeah.
And I pay the same fifteen that he does.
Right, but we've been, we've been living in a dream world because all the costs were covered by CMAS, Covanta.
Right, absolutely.
Oh yeah, the party's over.
And you, you may understand it, but I don't think the residents really do, that no matter what, if you have curbside now, that's going up.
Yep.
If you do, if you go to the transfer station, that's going up. It's not the town charging you more money, it's you're paying the actual costs.
Right.
Right, because the benefit of, of that agreement is gone.
Right.
And I really suggest that you do think about what's the best option for the community, and then figure out how you're going to pay for it from a fantasy standpoint. Because when you start mixing all the different alternatives together, there's just too many things to evaluate and get clear on. Because you, towns just, it's really hard to do that. So if you decide that you want to stay with a transfer station option, and that's it, then make that decision and figure out how you want to pay for it, so that it's fair or unfair or equitable or whatever. Or if you decide you want to go curbside collection, assuming you don't want to do the no-action alternative, then decide that that's how you want to do, what you want to do, and then determine how you want to pay for that. And what's the best way for this community to pay for that, that, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, and that makes sense, too.
And I don't have, I don't know if you need, I don't know what this town does for process in order to make those kind of decisions. I know what some other towns do, but I don't know what you folks are comfortable with or do.
We've, we've talked, doing, doing some sort of a survey, but we've, we've done nothing yet, right? We've talked about it. We'll probably, we have to have a public information meeting of some sort.
You do have some, at least some cost data, ask people around now.
It's September.
You know.
Yeah. We're going to be, we're going to do workshops and stuff, they got to be this month.
They got to be.
Right, and I, I think we, we're all in agreement of that, that, that time's of the essence, there's nothing, there's, we cannot undo what's, where we are now. We are here, so let's get, let's get over the past stuff and let's, let's get going.
I think one of the things we should do is we should establish a drop-dead date of when, how this is all going to be worked out. If we say, okay, if we need to get online with a contractor to start picking up trash and whatever, right, then we should have a drop-dead date, here's the stuff that might work out with Carver, maybe whatever, this is the date that we can't go past. And if it works out, it works out, if it doesn't, then we're in this box.
I think from what we were hearing.
It just doesn't have a date on it.
I mean.
What about town meeting?
October's the, yeah.
Don't they have a saying what we're going to do?
You can do anything you need to do.
Yeah. So.
They may have to, depending on the solution, I don't know, that's, that's another, that's a whole nother question.
Well, if you don't do it on taxes and you do a fee, then if you do it on taxes, town meeting makes the decision, right?
You, if you're doing an operational override, that's a ballot question, so that's the.
Yeah, we're not getting, we don't have time to put that together for November.
It's not going on the tax rate.
It would be.
It's going to have to be a pay-by-whatever.
It wouldn't be able to go on the tax rate immediately. Right, there's, I mean, I think what Mike's saying makes all the sense in the world, what, we have to come up with the, with the decision and then the, the funding mechanism. Whether you're, you're trying to set that sticker, and maybe it's higher in the first six months if you're going for the transfer station, or you're going through the bags, or whatever you're trying to do. Or it's, it's, you're trying to go all curbside because that's, you know, that gives you the, and the reason for the all curbside was, that gave you the best possible curbside quote, if that, that makes sense. That's why you do it that way, you're guar, you're guaranteeing a certain level, because that's blown up in other towns when they didn't do it that way. That was the big Plymouth issue.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with curbside, I'd love to see us have curbside, frankly, and it would be okay with me, as long as it was equitable and was paid for, so that the seniors pay the smaller amount, and all of us big users pay what we should be paying.
Right, so you're actually looking for a user fee, which is exactly, I think, what option two comes down to. Because you have a choice with option two, you have a choice to buy yourself a sticker at whatever the price of the sticker is, or you have the choice to go with a hauler. Option one is not an option, we've already decided.
Here's the thing about option two, though.
What?
That requires, in some fashion or another, I mean, we can keep calling it, keep calling it a district if, if Carver stays with us. But still, it's going to be us in some fashion, we're going to be the ones that have to hire the employees, you know, manage the place, deal with it.
If it's a district, then the district does that, if it's an inter-municipal agreement, then, then one of the towns could assume that role. And actually reduce the cost of, of operation for payroll and, and billing and accounts and whatnot, because you, you kind of move it into the system.
Right, but also getting all that work done is a, is a liability and a drain to the town, we've got to, we've got to think about that as well.
You know what, the startup is.
What ability do we have to take on more responsibility at this point?
We've discussed that, once you get the startup in and, and all the daters entered into the system, a lot of it becomes automated. You know, as far as, you know, employees and time and, and costs and whatnot. The things that don't, you know, right now, we have someone who works in municipal maintenance who oversees the, the tonnage that's reported from Covanta. So we can charge the haulers at twenty dollars a ton that we get back from the private haulers we have now. So, you could slide some of the responsibility that they're doing now, which is going to go away, because they won't be overseeing that any longer. So they could, in a sense, capture part of the responsibility of some, some of the oversight related to the new system, or the, or the, or the district, or the IMA. So, I mean, we already have some people doing things.
Yeah, we do, but, you know, this whole district thing, you know, was, was a nice deal when we were working with zeros. Everybody wants to be in that district.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but all of a sudden, when you're dealing with numbers, nobody wants to be in.
It would be okay.
Unless they can figure out a way to get the price down.
It would, it would still be an okay thing if we didn't have the rents thrown in it, and a, a motion was made and carried to close the operation as of December thirty-first, and to restructure the district. That, you know, that, that happened last December, and that's what really threw us into a tizzy as far as how are we going to resolve this? If we had just continued as a district, as, as a three towns, and, but then, then there would be an actual assessment made to the towns.
That, that sent us back when we were, that sent us back a precious time. And that's what's been wrestling, and we would have had a determination by now of what the district would do, and that would have helped us in making our decision.
But we don't have that luxury now.
We'll get, we'll get through it.
Can we, can we?
It's going to be.
Do we, we, I look, we, can we come up with?
We're going to keep hammering on this until we figure it out.
Yeah, but can we come up with some kind of guidelines, or can somebody come up with some deadlines and some things, I mean?
Your guidelines right here.
No, yeah, that, this, this, yeah, but this, this doesn't really, this isn't really a hundred percent, I mean, this is.
I would think the October town meeting is our drop-dead as whatever the decision is.
No, I think it needs to be decided by the end of this month.
Well, I mean, that's, you're deciding to, we're going to have to bring something to town meeting.
Dream on.
You have to bring something to a town meeting.
What's that?
You're going to have to bring something to a town meeting, it's not necessarily the fall town meeting, you can always call a special.
We can have a special, that's right.
You can always do that.
Well, we could, I mean, if you, if you thought about the October town meeting, and that was our drop-dead date, where we had to have something prepped for them, then that gives us almost two months.
Well, well, but we have to figure out what it is that we would be putting on the warrant, because you've got to have something on the warrant in order for the body to take action.
Well, we can always put something on the warrant, I mean, come on, we can, we can put something on there.
You know, you could, I would say, just thinking about that, given what we're going through with COVID-nineteen, the contentiousness of this, I, I would think you do, it might be a separate.
I think it, I think town meeting problems should be separate.
That's fine.
And if we put a swear jar out there for the, that town meeting, we'd probably pay for the first year.
Sounds like guilt. Yeah, you know, people, I, I hope people understand out there that this is going to be a real rude awakening. I mean, you, right now, I think if you go to the place up the street here, it's about a hundred and eighty dollars a ton, to write up New Bedford waste over there, it's about a hundred and eighty bucks a ton, okay, to drop.
Construction stuff.
Yeah, to bring your construction material or anything like that, and, you know, trash, anything, it's all in there, a hundred and eighty dollars a ton. So, you know, we're paying zero. So people have to realize, you know, we're talking, you know, even if we talk about the first five-year deal, which apparently we've been able to negotiate for seventy-seven and change.
The district negotiated that.
Seventy-eight dollars a ton.
The district negotiated it and CMAS extended it to the towns.
Right.
And, yeah, it is a good deal, at least you know, you have something concrete.
That's a heck of a deal, but it's not going to be fifteen-dollar stickers or forty-dollar stickers anymore, that's over.
No, that's over, and it's been over in other places bef, I know people, a couple of years ago, when, when people were complaining about us, I think it was when we jacked them to forty, we went from thirty to forty, people were saying, oh, it's a rip-off, this, that, and the other thing. And people in Plymouth were saying, please, you know, we're paying like a hundred and eighty bucks for our stickers.
But if you think about it, all that money we've gotten for stickers and from the, the haulers on, on the fee, that pretty much built up the free cash, or the reserves that we have, right? Over the last number of years, I mean, we've been collecting that.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that was going free cash, we use that operation, keep the town's operation.
But I'm just saying, that, that amount of money, it's probably three million dollars over ten years we've collected.
That's another hole between those two.
We had to reduce about two-hundred K out of the budget with that, too.
Right, but I'm just saying, we've, we've probably collected about three million dollars over ten years between the two.
Right now, taking another two-hundred, two-hundred thousand out of the budget is a big deal, it's a big, big donut.
Yep, we had to do that, that was for.
You're going to lose that, what, what are you getting, like, two-hundred and something thousand?
We already, we already reduced it for the FY twenty-one budget, so we absorbed the hit.
Well, last thing for our consultant, I'll, I'll put him on the spot, if you were sitting where I'm sitting, what would you do?
Oh, boy. I heard you said you had thirty-five years of experience.
I did, yeah, I'm older than that, too, so I'm sorry. I, I would do curbside collection, it's a higher level of service for about the same price as what you can do for likely the transfer station costs. That's what it, that's what I would do, and that's why most municipalities in your situation go that route. But once again, all towns are different.
Yep.
You know, if I, the town in Needham has never gone curbside collection.
How many, how many towns locally don't have a transfer station?
How many towns locally don't have a transfer station? I'm not sure.
Not too many. I mean, the ones that I've, I've looked at, I mean.
Mattoise it doesn't, I know that, there's a lot of towns that do curbside collection.
Mattoise it has something.
Well, they might have a convenience area.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I call Rochester, Rochester Convenience Facility.
Keep that separate, because there's a lot of places that want to provide that extra level of service.
Middleborough, Bridgewater, Plymouth has one.
Middleborough's a little different, because they got a deal like you guys have almost, where they get the curbside collection for free because of what they deal with waste management.
Because they got a place to dump their stuff.
Right, they have a landfill. You know, Falmouth, for instance, they have a curbside collection program.
But they also have a transfer station.
They also have a transfer station.
Bourne has a transfer station?
It's the level of service, that's why I put that on one of the early signs. What do you, what do you want for a level of service? It just costs more money.
No, I'm, I'm with you.
The town I'm in has a, has a, they call it a convenience center as such, but if I bring the bagged trash, it's free, but anything else, they weigh you and you have to pay extra, and there's no.
Really, so bagged trash would be free there?
Yeah, because you've got, you've already bought the bag.
Yeah. Oh, oh, so it's, you've already paid for it?
Or I've already paid for it.
So it's not free, it's just a set cost.
Yeah.
Do any, do any communities that have curbside set it up so that the contract with the hauler, where they charge a, a flat fee to the customer, every customer, and then on top of that, you've got a bag fee? So that, you know, the fact that they have to drive the truck past your house is paid for, just like, you know, we had talked about with the sewer, a blended sewer rate, where we charged a base fee and then usage went on top of that.
Yes, some towns, and I don't have any exact names, but.
But that is something that can be done.
That's essentially a pay-as-you-throw program.
But that's in the process of deciding how you're going to pay for it.
Correct, correct. That's essentially a pay, some towns do overflow bags, so they give them a container, and anything extra is paid for separately. There's, you know, this wind-blown litter issue is a little bit associated with that, things like that, but.
So you've got the driver there, you know, with a computer poking an extra bag at, you know, such and such a house, put that on the bill next month, or is that how that works?
Sorry, Bob, one of the things you have to realize, so some of the things we experienced in my community is, they don't have the, you, I bought my own bin for your trash, you just put the bags out. Within two, two weeks of living there, the crows had picked apart the trash every single time, so you buy your own bin.
Here it would be seagulls.
Right, yeah, here'd be the seagulls. Right, yeah, here'd be the seagulls.
I have my own bin.
So you've got the, um, so the, there's, their folks come out, and they pop the lid, pull the bags out. They're making sure it's all the right colored bags.
And they throw it in the trash.
That's more expensive because it takes longer labor-wise. People, it's, uh, the, the fork coming out, pulling up.
That's the fastest. You'd be better off in today because of, because of the way automated has evolved. You'd probably be better off selling somebody that has more trash two bins.
So you could do it by the barrel instead.
Right.
You can put a sticker on the barrel or whatever.
You could do a smaller size barrel for some folks.
Yeah, right, smaller barrel for seniors, you know, little barrel, and then bigger barrels are-
It's one size barrel, correct?
So the way it was proposed was one size barrel for everybody, a sixty-four for the trash and a ninety-six for recycles because that happens every other week.
But do they, do they, is that necessitated by the automatic pickup and the side pickup? Can you have a, a big barrel and a small barrel? Can they do that with the same truck?
Same truck can do, uh, the different sized containers, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's another way to create some, some equity in the curbside.
Yeah, you don't want to be having everybody do things differently, but, you know, essentially the cots are not much difference in price, whether it's a thirty-five gallon cot, a sixty, or a sixty-five gallon, sixty-four gallon cot.
No, but the amount of trash that goes in there is different.
That's correct. That's correct.
So you'd figure out a price on, on that one.
Those are some of the things you'd want to think about once you've made a decision on which way to go. Is how do you want to pay for it that's, that you believe is fair and equitable or in the best interest of the community? And I say it that way because you won't get everybody to agree on what's fair and equitable or, or in the best interests of the community.
If fifty-one percent of the people support us without lynching us, we'll be doing good with this one. There's no, there's no winners here.
There's no winners because your cost is going up.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you're going from forty bucks to, uh, you know, a minimum of three hundred or, you know, e- even if, even if what you say about the value of the transfer station went that route, even if, even forty to two fifty, for example,
Yeah, I, I-
that's gonna be, yeah, that's, that's sticker shock for people.
And just so people know, and just kind of what Jim's been bringing up, um, over the last few years, we went back to the different players in this that own the, the landfill plus the land beyond it, plus Covanta, and the, the question was about expansion, so we can continue some sort of agreement, something, and that could never be moved forward. They're just, they couldn't make that, uh, that deal. There's a-
Someone, someone next to- We, we, we talked about that before.
Right.
The deal, uh, yeah, I know, they could have-
The district's next to it.
But you can't blame them.
Absolutely not.
I, I don't blame the company involved for one minute.
Who would want a landfill on their property and then who would want to expand it? There's-
Well, and not only that, but if you did and you expanded it, insurance is a big deal.
Yep.
Especially environmental insurance.
Well, the, the way it was set up has been pretty good for, for them as well. They were getting, yeah. But, um, the original crafters of this for the towns did a very, very good job.
It was, it was originally set up just as a landfill, not as, not as a dumping for Covanta. So, um, we bought into it, right?
The only way this-
We got free service and, and free disposal of curbside for all these years. And I, I don't know if it's really reflected in your monthly bills for curbside. I don't know what you just pay because I, I, I might have had curbside for three months out of forty years, I don't know.
See, you like the sticker.
It's, I'm like you, how much do I generate? I got a twenty gallon bag, you know?
See, that's, 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 and that's a big deal.
It is, and that's a personal preference.
That's a big deal for seniors. Look, we just built a new school and we've added to the tax rate, okay? That costs seniors money.
And the two districts are building palaces, the fire, water and fire districts.
One so far. The other one hasn't done anything, and they, and I've-
They have some issues that are gonna happen.
The only way for this, for our rates or that, that sweet agreement to basically have lasted in technical perpetuity was if they built that Covanta plant in Wareham.
Right.
And that was not allowed.
Yep.
They said no.
They said no.
Yeah, so we got all the drawbacks and none of the benefit.
We got the benefit.
Well, I got a pretty good benefit.
But the benefit-
I've got benefit for-
Well, you didn't get enough of the benefits. The community is located and got a much better benefit.
Zero is the benefit.
Yeah, but zero forever is a better benefit.
Rochester makes money.
Oh, Rochester?
They get paid.
That's what I mean. They get the, they get the plants there.
What do you call it makes money, too? Uh, uh, Bourne is making a ton of money.
I know, but Avon is, too.
And you know they take everything in their dump?
Yeah.
There's, there's literally nothing they don't take. They have spaces for everything.
But Alan is saying that the state is gonna come down with different-
Well, you know, that could be, but that, we have to deal with what we're dealing with right now. When the state changes it, then we have to deal with that.
What's going in the wires.
In the meantime, we have to deal with something for now.
They get a pass. They, they just point to Otis and say, not us.
So I, and, and shocking, I believe we have a unanimous that option one, we're not gonna do that.
That's correct.
No, we gotta do something, we can't just-
All right, so we got something, something done.
Option one is out.
How, how do I help you get further, I guess, is the question. I don't know.
Huh?
I don't know what you'd like for a process and if there's anything else I can do to help you.
I still think that we ought to call it, that October town meeting is, whether we actually do it in October town meeting or not, that should be our deadline.
I'd, I'd like to get a decision-making deadline by the end of September if we can.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I'm okay with that, too.
As to which, which option to go with here?
I mean, we're gonna have to cut, at some point, you gotta say, okay, these negotiations are not gonna happen, this isn't gonna work, and we gotta go someplace else. We can always go with curbside, always.
Wait, but they, they, they might need some lead time. Am I correct, Mr. Cipione?
They have to buy new trucks.
They have to get trucks.
Well, they can, they can lease them and this and that, but they have to have the cards, which they can get, hopefully relatively quickly.
You know, the price is right. I mean, and I'm sure you must have told them, you know, they gave you a bid. When was the bid supposed to start?
April.
April?
Yeah.
So not even January?
Yeah, that's not happening.
Well, it's gotta happen in January. I mean, we, we're not gonna be stuck without any service come January.
Some of them can do it in January, but, some of them can do it in January, but we didn't require it.
Okay.
We didn't require it so you get the responses to see what the rates are.
I get it. But, yeah, somebody would have to step up to the plate, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would request to be allowed to, to work with Mr. Cipione with, with the respondents to, to get the, continue to get the best deal possible to try and work on that. Does that seem logical?
Oh, sure, yeah. We'll keep going with that. But I do think you should determine if you need a public process or what to move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we gotta, this month, you gotta plan some public meetings.
Yeah, and I think we, you're right, we need to hear from the residents and there's gonna be-
What do they have to say?
You know, and that's-
They're the ones that are gonna pay for it. They're more important.
One way or another.
Well, that's what I'm trying, I've said that.
Alan?
Unfortunately, to have public meetings, we're restricted to twenty-five within fifty, inside, outside.
Can we do it via Zoom?
Yeah, we can do it on Zoom.
Let me finish, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I was asking a question.
What I would suggest is we put something out on the town website immediately, ask the two newspapers to put something out to get feedback, et cetera. Because if we just wait for a, a meeting and we're restricted by numbers, we're not gonna get a very good turnout that's representative of the town.
We could do a survey based on these alternatives.
We can also reach out to the school and ask them if they can go through their parent teachers association, whenever they're available, to get feedback, so at least we get some numbers that are representative of the town, as well as the council and agent.
I'd suggest, I'd suggest coming up with a survey based on, on these three things with a, you know, certainly the caveat that these are rough numbers. They, they could fluctuate depending on, on the, how the district is dissolved and, and other considerations as well.
I, I agree with the curbside number. I have, I have, you know, a different outlook on, um, transfer station number.
Yeah, and, you know, you can, you can put a parenth-
But curbside, I mean, I-
You can put a parenthetical in your survey saying, you know, under each, under the transfer station alternative and say this number may be less depending on, on the dissolution of the district, how that goes, you know, this. We're not gonna be giving anybody exact numbers. They're ballpark numbers and that needs to be made clear.
But the way it's going right now, we may get to the point where the transfer station won't matter because no nego, not, if the district doesn't deal with its issue and Carver and Wareham doesn't deal with its issue by January, it doesn't matter, we're moving on.
We, we have two meetings next week, one Carver, Wareham, and one with the district.
That's fine, what I'll do is I'll-
We're accelerating the process, and I've, I've been trying to push the process.
I'm not gonna complain about that.
I'll, I'll put, I'll, I'll, you know, under the trash discussion next week,
Yeah, let's-
why don't we come up with a, with a draft survey for us to vote on?
You have a motion-
Yeah, we'll get, I'll get something out to you. Um, I might not even need, you wanna, I'll get something out and I'm gonna speak to you as individuals, and I may not need even a, even a vote for the, the board if just, um, uh, the conversations go well, because that's, I don't need a vote on it. I think I can get something out there. I'd just like to run by a couple, uh, individuals. I, I'm thinking we're just gonna have a simple weighted vote. Your top one's one, your second one is two, and your least favorite is three. Because that's gonna give you your weighted vote on the whole thing. I think that's the, or do you, does the board want, choose one?
I thought we'd got rid of one.
Uh, yeah, choose, well, what is it down to? Two options, so.
Yeah.
Two options, yeah, two options at present, so.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a mo, a motion and a second on the floor to let Mr. Sullivan and-
You're working on this? Well, I guess a survey would be part of that, so I guess we don't need to do anything further. Okay, uh, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Yeah, it's a good start. Uh, anything else?
Yeah, I do want to just, I, I just want to point out that, that, uh, I do want to point out that our town is just one leg of the three-legged stool, stool, if you will, and that selection of munis is just one of nine.
Yeah.
So, as, you know, he's been trying hard and that's, try, try, I know how unwell he can be with a five-member board here, so, uh-
Just imagine nine from three different communities.
Nine, so, you know, I think it's, uh-
I'm sure, I'm sure he's been bulldogging them wherever the opportunity arrives.
So while there's all, you know, there's obviously a level of frustration, we wish we weren't dealing with it. That's not the case and we're, we're moving forward, so I appreciate all the efforts from everybody.
All marriages could be divorces.
And thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you a lot, yeah.
Thank you, guys. I'd love to talk trash, so.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I don't think you've heard the last of us.
I just hope, I just hope I can be helpful.